So let's go ahead and get started. So are we, I see we're recording already. Are we good? Okay. Good morning and welcome to the September 10th 2020 Business Meeting. And I'm going to ask our County Administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
As Chair, first our staff support today Christina Twilliger Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council. Role call Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Humberston.
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we again are holding this meeting virtually. If you've joined us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll promote you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during the public communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it at any time during the meeting by email at bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and the area which you live when you send that email. And Gary, what's up next?
Yes, first Commissioners, we're going to have a wildfire update. We have Nancy Bush Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander of the Emergency Operations Center for wildfires to give you an update on where we are at since we last talked. So Nancy, please go ahead.
Hi, good morning, everyone. So before I get into my update, I just want to say, you know, for those of you that may be listening and everyone that has evacuated and following our instructions, we really do appreciate it. It's our top priority to make sure that our residents are safe. And you know, get information out as quickly and efficiently as we can. And we will continue to do that, and we do appreciate everyone's patience as we go through this really trying time. So as part of the update, I just want to say this is obviously a very, very dynamic. Excuse me, very dynamic fire. The weather has played a, obviously a very large role in what has happened over the last few days. So please be aware that I'm going to give you what I have right now, but in 10 minutes, it definitely could change. So we do have shelters and a shelter open at Clackamas Community College. We are working on getting a shelter open at Oregon City High School. And hope to have more information on that just a little bit later today. We have some fabulous partners that out there too in our communities. Excuse me, it's very smoky in here. The Clackamas Town Center, Oregon City Schools, Clackamas Community College. There's a lot of businesses that we don't even know about that are opening up their parking lots for people to come in and park if they need to. We are putting some RVs, of course, in places in Gladstone and others. So there are so many community partners helping us, and I just want to say thank you to all of them. And hopefully at some point during this process, we'll be able to post a list of all of those who've been helping.
Yes.
So we have, last night was a very dynamic night. We had a couple of things going on. There was a fire pushing in toward the community of Colton. And thanks for, we actually, by then we did have some state resources here and they went to that fire. And they were able to hold that off last night. We are seeing also a push into the Estacada area. And again, we have some teams there that are working on that as well. They are very diligent. We are doing the evacuation orders. And our fire and law officials are being very diligent in making sure that people are out of the area as we see things moving very, very quickly. So I want to give a shout out to them as well. Our CCOM staff last night was, I mean, working in, you know, in perfect harmony with our fire people. Chief Charlton this morning just came to us and said that they, you know, he said they, they were so incredible. They always are, but he was very, very complimentary and so I wanted to mention that as well as we looked at those two dynamic situations last night. We had yesterday into our Public Inquiry Center, 650 calls. And we're working on getting more information out to the public to help them because as we get those calls, we're able to understand more of what the public's looking for. So we're updating our websites with that information so we can help make sure people have the information that they need. The Will Hoyt Fire ODF, which is Oregon Department of Forestry, has now taken that over. And also working on the Doughty Fire. So we will be seeing some fire camps also coming into the area. That will include not only our state partners, but also we have a federal team that is going to be coming in to assist us as well. As part of here, of what we're doing here in the EOC is we're making sure that they have a place to set up. We are working with Mr. Schmidt to get some of the staff here in our buildings as well. And we will have a fire camp, yeah, a camp set up here as well, though we're not sure where that is because that is happening right now as we speak. And over the next 24 to 48 hours, you'll be seeing the federal assets as well as our state assets coming in. And you will see more of them here on our campus. We are seeing that the wind speed is actually starting to go down and is acting, is shifting. We did ask this morning, it's like, well, does that mean it's blowing back on itself? And they're like, not necessarily. So we, just because the wind is shifting, we want to make sure people understand that doesn't mean that we're, you know, things are tremendously better. It is better that the winds are dying down, but just because of it shifts doesn't mean that just it blows back on itself. They did do a flyover this morning and we're looking at those maps now. We're putting together maps that are going to be on our website that now that we have those assets coming in where they're doing flyovers, we have a much better picture of what it looks like out there. And we will definitely, when that comes out, we will make sure that there is a media release that lets people know to go look at the new mapping. Our maps right now, if you need to know if you are in evacuation area, when you open up our site, which is clackamas.us/wildfires, on the left-hand corner, there's a place you can put in your address that will help you understand what kind of order you may or may not be under. We do not have the, they are not, they, we don't have a lot of information this morning on structures and what structures have been lost because they put all of their efforts into fighting the fire last night. So we're hoping to have more information on that a little bit later today, or at least early in the morning. Our, let's see, our Sheriff's Office, of course, they're here in command with us. They have also set up a command post too for evacuation teams, which is here on our campus as well. And they are working their normal, the patrol ops and that, excuse me, a command post at their main site. Also CCSO, our Sheriff's Office, has active patrol for the evacuation areas for those, you know, to help with policing that. And so I just, they're doing a great job too in getting their staff out there. If you need to see the county and state road closures, we are working with the State of Oregon to put that on one map, which is now an Oregon Trip Check. I just want to make sure everyone understands though, that sometimes those closures happen very, very quickly. So please be very, very aware of when you're out there. And if you see a road closure and you're like, why check, you know, I looked at Trip Check an hour ago and it wasn't on. You know, please be sure that you are respectful of that and do not go past the, the road closure. I think that is what I have at this time, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Nancy, could you please update the board on the, the state Fire Marshal and that action taking place with the fire control, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. So the state Fire Marshal is here, they got here this morning, actually, and they took over those two fires I was talking about last night. They put resources on there. They were working very, are working very closely with our Clackamas Fire Board as I speak right now, they're meeting. And they are transitioning that span of control over to ODF. So, and we also have a type one team coming in from FEMA. They are coming from the Southwest. I believe there, a lot of them are in the Texas area. They are coming up. We do know some of them are already in Oregon. And we will be meeting with them. And over the next 24 to 48 hours, everything is going to be switched over to that incident, I'm sorry, Incident Management Team and ODF. And the good thing is that our firefighters in the county are going to be able to cover their county, cover the county for those things that they normally would cover. Because over the past few days, they have been so stretched. They were doing life safety, but there were some calls, for example, they weren't able to go out on. So they are going to be able to switch back and put efforts into the protecting our, our residents very close to the level that they did before. So that is happening over the next 24 to 48 hours. But ODF, the Fire Marshal's team is already here and already working the fire. We will have some air resources as well coming with these two teams coming in. And also just to let you know, I, we're pretty sure that they're going to make this a complex. So we've been talking about like the Doughty Fire, the Riverside Fire, all of those different fires. So we don't know what it's going to be called yet, but we probably will have a complex, which helps also bring in resources. And so all of the fires will be just referred to as the, for example, the Clackamas Complex. I hope that was helpful.
So we have a lot, we have a lot of hands up.
Okay, there's, there's a lot of moving parts.
Before we go to the questions, I just want to add a little something. So last night about four o'clock, something like that, we met with the Fire Marshal, Chief Carlton, Charlton, the Sheriff, Canby Fire, Gary, Nancy, Dan Johnson. The request of the Fire Chief was, we need help. And the Fire Marshal said that they would help and that it was time to ask for federal help. And so they asked. We agreed that we needed it. And consequently, as we walked out the door, the Fire Marshal called and resources started to arrive us. And as you can tell, we are finally getting help. When I got home, I got a call from the National Guard. They have helicopters on the ground that they have been unable to get, fight the fire with because of wind and smoke. One of our mayors called and said, why aren't we getting help? Well, that's the reason. And then the Governor also called. I gave her Sean Drinkwine is quite frightened. And I gave her Sean's phone number as I did Ron Wyden called me this morning. So the federal delegation is well aware and the state delegation is well aware of what's going on here in Clackamas County. And at the Mayors and Chairs meeting today, we have invited our legislative partners, as well as you, I believe, to join us for an update. And we're going to see if we can get somebody from the Fire Department. So a lot's happening very fast. And again, Nancy and your team, fabulous work. Thank you. So questions, we'll start with Paul.
Yeah, well, I just want to thank everyone, Nancy, your crew, the Fire Chief, everyone involved in this, CCSO, the Sheriff, whatnot. I really appreciate everyone just stepping up and taking the action necessary. And it's great news that we have more resources on the way. And as I believe, but you know, again, being, bringing equipment and people that we need desperately online is huge. I don't want to, as I switch here, I don't want to diminish the impacts of the, those that have lost their homes or have their homes or property threatened. It's, it's got to be absolutely devastating. So my heart goes out to everyone and not just here in Clackamas County, but throughout the state. And obviously Marion County's been hit real hard. We are a populous county, our population's pretty high, Marion County's is high. And like, you know, even down in Medford, knowing that some of that fire came down at their urban area. Where I'm going with this is that, you know, the, since we made our declaration and we made the entire county level one, two, or three, I've just been getting a lot of inquiries as to how safe are we in the urban area? So my question, Nancy, kind of setting the stage for that question. Glad to know that the winds have died down to some degree and there'll be a wind shift in watching the news. Can you, can we say anything? Can you kind of speak to what, what the forecast might be? Not the weather forecast, but how, how the urban area of Clackamas County is currently looking at? Are we safer today than we were yesterday?
Oh, that is a tricky question. I mean, we have very active fires still. I mean, that, that is, that is true. The weather is helping us right now, right now, because the winds are dying, are dying down. But we have very, you know, hot and dry weather. And you know, our concern is that, you know, nothing happened, you know, like, you know, you know, someone tries to do a barbecue and it gets out of control and that kind of stuff. Because all of our, we, the Pacific Northwest is beautiful, right? But we have that urban wildland interface even into our more populous areas. So, you know, our concern is we want people to be very vigilant. It's like, you know, don't, you know, don't be barbecuing. You know, don't do some of those things that you might normally do or really think about what you're doing before you do it. Because we're very susceptible to fire right now. And our resources are so low that, you know, a fire that may be normal in, you know, six months ago could be very devastating right now. So I'm not sure if I'm answering your question. I will say too, that we have a wildland fire protection plan that we work with on our Fire Defense Board every year. And every fire district has something in that plan. Because we have wooded areas also in, in our more populous areas. So we still want people to be vigilant. The weather is starting, at least the wind, is starting to be a little bit more in our favor. But we still need people to be very prepared. Think about it, you know, if you're at a level one, we're not, that you definitely, we're not saying to get out of town or anything, but you really do need to be very vigilant on what you're doing. Think about what if you did have to evacuate and be very alert on what's going around, going on in your communities.
I appreciate that, Nancy. I just wanted to say that after the incident in California in Paradise last year, you know, people saw the devastation and we're experiencing that here, right?
Right.
Maybe possibly tenfold, right? If not more. So people are terrified, they're absolutely terrified. And some people are not even sleeping and they just don't know. They, they just can't, I, I think grapple with, am I, am I safe? You know, do I actually really need to leave? And I don't want to, it's just the panic, maybe in areas where we truly shouldn't be panicking. I think maybe the words are be, be prepared, be cautionary, but don't panic.
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner, absolutely. Don't panic, but you, we want you to be prepared. We want you to be cautious and we want you to be paying attention to what is going on in your surroundings, but do not panic.
Thank you.
Jim.
Commissioner Schrader is going to be up next.
Martha, Sonia and Ken.
Okay, so Nancy, so the span of control is now moving to FEMA and the federal government, right? And ODF.
Not FEMA, it's moving to an Incident Management, it's a type one team. I'm saying, yeah, I guess it is FEMA, it's a type one team. And then yes, ODF and the State Fire Marshal Office.
Okay, and what, could you, again, I got quickly interrupted. I'm sorry about that when you first started to speak, so I apologize.
No worries.
Because, well, this stuff's pretty important. So again, what is the name of the, what I'm seeing on maps? I just wanted to make sure I'm visually getting this. It's mostly around Estacada, Malino, Malala and, and Colton. And it has merged into one main fire?
Yes, and well, not, not everything is merged. That's, but we are looking at a complex instead of calling it to separate fires. But we do have merging fires, but they haven't all merged.
Okay, where, where are they merging? I mean, at this point?
So, yeah, it's around, so it was the river, the River Fire, which is the one that was coming over from Marion County.
Okay.
And then our Doughty Fire, I believe.
Then our what fire?
Doughty.
The Doughty, okay.
Yeah, I'm pretty, yeah.
Okay.
I probably need to check that to be sure, but I'm pretty sure it was Doughty.
And, and we are going to get air support, you think?
That's what, that's. We are getting air support, yes.
Okay, and they're going to be, everyone who's working on this is going to be centered in your Incident Command where you are now.
So not everyone, there'll be fire camps.
Okay.
Here, that we will, their command staff. And in general, usually when I've worked with the teams coming in, PIOs are working. So it depends on their, you know, what their, their goals are and where they'll be. But we will have several coming in here on this campus.
Right, and are we going to have external firefighters flown in too? I mean, is that part of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, that's part of the team coming in from Texas.
Okay, but they're with FEMA, you said?
That, yes, that is the, yes, that is the type one team, the federal type one team.
Type one team, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sonia and Ken.
Yeah, thank you Nancy for everything, really appreciate it. The whole team, it's been pretty phenomenal. I'm hearing reports that, and mostly social media and anecdotal and people telling me that some folks are refusing to leave. And I'm just curious what the truth is in that.
So I actually did hear this morning that there have been people that have not wanted to leave or don't, you know, I mean, you know, they're staying. And our Sheriff's Office, as well as our firefighters, are going out to the door to door to talk to people. And like last night, whenever we thought, you know, Colton was in such danger, they actually did a sweep to make sure people were out.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we just cannot emphasize enough to our public. It's like if we give you a level three, which means go, that you go. It's so critical because we have, you know, we have resources and we also, you know, our firefighters have to go back in to make sure people are out, which also puts others in danger.
At risk, yeah.
My next question is, there's a lot of rumors going on out there. And Gary sent an email yesterday clarifying that Antifa is not starting the fires, which was good. We got that. There's also some talk about looters. And I've heard that there were going to be looters in both Malala and Colton. And I'm just curious if there's any truth to that or if that is just people making up stories.
Yeah, no, the Sheriff's Office has not reported any looting. As I did mention a little earlier though, they are putting more staff out to patrol those areas that have been evacuated. So they will, they will be doing that safely.
Okay, Ken?
Just two questions. One, Nancy, did you have anybody actually simply working social media from the Operations Center to keep people informed? Like on Facebook and Instagram and Nextdoor?
Yes, sir. We have our PGA team is working on that and they're putting the most up-to-date information out there. They're watching comments, trying to control rumors and those types of things well, as well. And also collecting information for like Q and A.
Excellent. Just wanted to be sure we were covering that base. I found it pretty useful myself, quite frankly. I, I would assume that we will have an after-action evaluation process when this is all said and done?
I'm sorry, it was, we just found out that we have people coming in from Utah. Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
I just wanted to confirm that, that after all is said and done, there'll be an after-action evaluation to look at what did right, did wrong, et cetera?
Absolutely, we'll have one both on this and COVID.
Doesn't surprise me and we got folks coming from Utah. That's good to hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, yeah, have things coming in. But yeah, they, I wanted to make sure that I did mention to you that we have five engines that are coming right now from Utah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for the Antifa question. I was going to ask that one myself because that has been debunked. And evidently somebody in Milwaukee last night had been harassed. Somebody, a Democrat, that Antifa was the cause of all this. So that has been cleared up. And so we, we asked, we're bringing the information about asking the federal government to you. Not necessarily for an okay, but I had to do this and we wanted to inform you that that occurred. And I hope you support the decision to ask the federal government to come in. Okay? Okay.
Is there, is there any ratification necessary on that, Mr. Schmidt?
No, so this was a state decision, but they, the state Fire Marshal said, obviously they would like the support of the County Commissioners since it's York County. And so Jim gave that authority of, yes, we support that. So unless you have an objection, you do not need a motion to support that.
No objections from me.
All right, so COVID, I guess, huh?
Yeah, so that's, wildfires is just the most recent emergency declaration. We still have the standing emergency declaration for COVID-19. To give you an update on COVID-19, we have Philip Mason Joyner, who is the Incident Commander for the Emergency Operations Center and our County's Public Health Director. And Dr. Sarah Present, our Clackamas County Health Officer. So Philip and Dr. Present, please go ahead.
Good morning Chair Bernard and Commissioners. Thanks for having us and thank you for your continued support in our response to the COVID-19 pandemic response, along with now the fires. It's been an exceptionally difficult week for our community and we're working really hard to provide support. Right before, before the fires, we were really feeling optimistic. COVID-19 cases have been flattening. Our numbers and our metrics were looking pretty good, headed in the right direction for Phase Two, which Dr. Present will talk a little bit more in the details and has a PowerPoint to share. We were also effective in the past couple of weeks advocating with the state, the Governor's Office and the Oregon Health Authority, requesting changes to Phase One guidance to allow our community to enjoy the reopening of pools, playgrounds. And we've been working with them, preparing for fall activities and helping to support, to support our community in, in their new path forward. We, we spent last week really working hard with our communications staff to prevent what we call the holiday bump. Folks coming together from the past Labor Day holiday weekend and trying to apply what we learned during Memorial Day and Fourth of July, that folks, really kind of encouraged folks to do what they can to not spread, spread the cases of COVID-19 in the community. And, and we're still going to see the impacts from Labor Day in a couple of weeks still. I really, I really want to today recognize our public health staff and our EOC staff here that are working really hard, still keeping up with all of our disease investigation work, all the contact tracing work during this challenging week. We also have had a dedicated team of staff that have worked with all of our schools. Over 150 schools, we received their reopening plans in the past couple of weeks. Reviewed all of them, provided guidance and expertise on what they can do to meet the requirements from the Oregon Department. um, and expertise on what they can do to meet the requirements from the Oregon Department of Education and, um, begin preparing for in-person instruction. Um, related to the fires, because all of this is connected in our community, um, we are reaching out to all of our cases and contacts for COVID nineteen, those folks who have had, we've asked to quarantine or to isolate that are living in evacuation areas, providing with guidance and the supports that they need, um, in order to be safe, to not expose to others. We are really concerned about, um, the evacuations having an impact on COVID nineteen spread. Our isolation facility, one of the isolation facilities we had in the county did have to evacuate earlier this week. And, um, we now have hotel capacity issues, limited hotel room openings available, so we've worked really hard in the emergency operations center past few days, um, to get folks into safe housing, not in congregate settings. Um, our environmental health team has been working hard, working with the Red Cross on a few shelters, providing inspections. It's really challenging them, for them to also think about COVID in mind, uh, making sure that social distancing is happening, making sure that they're following all of the different public health guidance and doing what they can in these settings to keep people safe. Our logistics team is working really hard to make sure that our, our first responders have the PPE that they need. Um, especially those that have to be outside right now with the poor air quality, and also concerned with COVID nineteen risks in their work. Um, public health, we worked yesterday with PGA and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, uh, to issue an air quality advisory, as the smoke and the air quality levels are, they're really changing rapidly. In general, um, the air quality in our county is unhealthy, and we, we've developed guidance, pushed that out yesterday to help keep people safe. Um, while there are winds coming in, um, we, we had a state call this morning, and it sounds as though the conditions related to air quality are going to be in effect, and this advisory will be in effect at least until um, Sunday at this point, and that could be longer depending on the weather and, and what we see. Um, I think one of the really important things related to COVID and air quality right now is to keep in mind that, that those fabric face coverings, they're really helpful, helpful in reducing, um, reducing spread or protecting others from the spread of COVID nineteen, but they're not going to be effective in, in reducing the impacts on health-related concerns with air quality. Um, so folks need to stay inside, they need to reduce being outside, their exposure, um, to the, to the air quality as much, as much as possible. And, um, with that, Dr. President, if there's anything you want to add, or if you want to dive into the metrics?
Um, I just want to add, um, again, I really appreciate everyone's work and the work of our public health, uh, team during these incredibly challenging times. Uh, we have been offered some help from OHA as far as, um, uh, staffing for contact tracing over the weekend. Um, to ensure that we have enough people, as some of our staff are needing to focus on their own, um, their own safety. Um, and I think that's all I have to add, so, um, yeah, if, uh, you want to go, uh, Christina, there you are, sorry, I had to check around, if you want to go ahead and pull up the, the metrics, we can look through those. Okay, so as far as our, um, movement into phase two, um, Oregon statewide, um, I'll, I'll show you some more of the, the metrics in a little bit, but one of the, the positive things that we have seen is that the percent positivity of tests has been at five or lower for, um, for three consecutive weeks. So we are really, um, moving closer towards being able to have schools opening based on that metric. It has gone up, um, that percent positivity, you can see Oregon statewide has a red X next to it, but it's still below five percent, so that's still a reassuring thing for us. Um, I think in general, what I want to say about our COVID metrics is that the last several weeks, we've seen slight improvements. So things have been fairly steady with slight improvements, and I'll go through those in more detail. Um, a- again, as Philip mentioned, it's too early to tell any impact from the Labor Day holiday, and it's too early to tell any impact that, um, we may have from the evacuation and movement of people, um, clearly, we will manage that as we need to, because people's safety right now is really of the utmost importance. Um, you can see the second line there is Clackamas, Washington, Multnomah, we are meeting, um, four of the six metrics here, and then Clackamas itself as well is meeting four of the six metrics. So, um, again, we, we do like to look at trends, and I'll show you those in a minute, but that thirty-eight percent of cases not traced to a known source is really holding steady, if not, um, decreasing, we do want it below thirty percent. Um, go ahead to the next. Um. I think that's, I think we can go on to my, um, yeah, we have, we have Washington County, and we can look at Multnomah County separately if you are, are interested, but we had the, the group of the three together there, there's Multnomah, the second line up from the top, they are also meeting, uh, three of the metrics. Um, Philip, I think you were going to mention that there is now actually a seventh metric that we need to meet. Uh, that is not indicated here, would you like to tell them about that?
Yeah, so, um, the governor's office has created a new metric for determining if counties can move to phase two around the whole state. And, um, that is, um, for counties with more than a hundred cases, and we certainly do, we have over two thousand cases in Clackamas County. Um, that we must have case counts reduced to a hundred cases or less per one hundred thousand people per week, and that's something that they'll, the governor's office will also be looking at before they approve us moving into phase two. The good news is we're currently meeting that metric.
All right, thank you, um, Christina, if you want to go ahead and pull up the Clackamas specific data, uh, PowerPoint. All right, so, um, I like to show just our, uh, case count over time, so this is looking at the last two weeks with the data pulled as of, uh, September sixth. Um, again, this is our own, um, our own epidemiologist pulling this data, sometimes when we look at weekly things in a minute, it's not exactly the same as what you'll see with Oregon Health Authority, and a lot of that is based on the timing that the data is pulled and how things, you know, data gets kind of cleaned up and adjusted um, as we make contact with people, so the, you know, anything within a couple of days has some error, has some, um, um, possibility for change. Again, you can see there have been some high days, some low days, um, but nowadays over thirty in the last two weeks, which is, uh, very reassuring and overall steady, if not potentially a slight downtrend. Go on to the next slide, please. Did it not go? Let me see. All right, here we go, and so this is looking at our case count by day since, uh, June first. So taking that prior slide, those graphs, and squishing it all together into a much larger timeframe. Um, and you can see that there is sort of a, a bump there around, uh, mid-July, um, through August, and put a, uh, potential decrease, if not just, uh, certainly a flattening off. You can go on to the next slide, please. And this is a look at our outbreaks, and I'm sorry, this is a little bit small, um, but I just pulled up this last week from August thirty-first to September sixth, um, our total cases were a hundred and twenty-three, which gives us a case rate of twenty-nine point four per hundred thousand. So that is the first time that we are actually truly below that magic number of thirty per hundred thousand, where our kindergarten through third grade schools may be able to open if that, um, persists, so for the next few weeks. Again, I'm hoping that the Labor Day holiday does not cause a bump and get us out of that range, um, either one is a possibility. Uh, looking at the breakdown of the cases, we have thirty-six percent are sporadic, that is not linked to a known source, that means that they are cases that don't have any idea where they got, uh, where they got the disease. Twenty-four percent are household, twenty-four percent are, um, related directly to an outbreak. Um, the second generation is when somebody related to an outbreak then gives it to somebody else, so that could be one of their close contacts, it could be somebody within, um, within the same workplace, um, it could be a household contact, and then other close contacts that are not household, ten percent. We are interviewing the majority of our, um, cases, we still have a handful that refuse to be interviewed, but it's very low, and I haven't seen any changes in that in the last several weeks since I saw you last. Um, you can look at the types of outbreaks, workplaces, um, last week, we're seeing a lot of, um, sort of construction, contracting, um, uh, you know, small, small businesses, we are seeing outbreaks there, it goes up and down, but that's been fairly steady. The food, um, and agriculture, um, we're keeping a close eye on that, and our long-term care facilities. We continue to have the outbreaks there, but remember, an outbreak is defined as two or more cases in a setting, and for long-term care or retirement homes, it's actually defined as one case, uh, leads to an outbreak response. So, um, um, no, no big changes there either, I don't have a lot of big news for you guys today, uh, if you want to go on to the next slide, please. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, uh, about two weeks ago, the state Oregon Health Authority updated their projections. Um, and there was a lot of positive news in that as well, um, the main thing, and I'm going to just read this bottom paragraph, is that their, their updated projections suggest that transmission increased substantially during May, and then decreased in late June through late July. Um, the estimates of the R, of the reproductive value is about point nine. That means that each person is infecting less than one other person. So if anybody, if, if the R value is one, that's equivalent to each person who has the disease infects one other person. So if the number is above one, our cases grow, if it's below one, we look at a, a decrease in cases. Point nine is below one, so that is, you know, it trending towards a slow decline in cases in our state. Uh, I do want to just point out that the efforts of Oregonians have once again helped reverse the trend of rising infections. This is really, really good news, um, and as long as people maintain our COVID hygiene as much as possible, um, during, during this trying time of evacuations and movement, um, I'm still feeling fairly confident that people are doing the right thing and, and we're we're managing this pandemic. Um, if the transmission remains at current levels, we can expect a steady reduction in new infections. Again, we don't know, um, the trends are sensitive to small changes. Uh, and then the next slide, please. The following two slides are just pictures from our regional data dashboard, and I wanted to just make sure that everybody's aware of a couple of updates. One is that we are showing, um, hospital admissions per week, so this is Clackamas County specific that I'm showing you right now, but you can look at it from each of the counties, um, Clackamas, Multnomah, Washington, Yam Hill altogether or separately, um, and it shows us, shows the age breakdown of those who are hospitalized. Um, and then the next slide, please. This is the newest addition to our data dashboard, which looks at the incident rate per hundred thousand, which is one of those things that we're really looking at for school reopening. Um, and the dashed lines there, the top line of, is the thirty per hundred thousand that it needs to be under for three weeks to, um, have in-person school for K through three, and then for K through twelve, it needs to be at that, uh, ten per hundred thousand. Um, this is also showing the sporadic versus total case rate, so we want to have that sporadic rate, um, those who are not, no, linked to a known case to be under thirty percent. So that is something that we're tracking and can be shown, um, and is updated frequently Mondays and Fridays on our regional data dashboard. Lots of data, sorry. But I'm done, and I'm happy to take questions.
Chair Bernard, you're on mute.
Dang it. Is it time to ask to go to phase two?
Um, my understanding is that we will need to be meeting all of those metrics before phase two, um, approval is given, and we are not at this point. And I think there, the the focus on decreasing transmission will help us move into tra- into phase two, and will also help us move into in-person school. Um, and I think that those are both really top priorities for us in public health.
Yeah, because I know some counties have moved, asked to move into phase two without not meeting all the metrics, but, uh, I said I would move, ask when you say we should, so, uh, we're not ready yet. So, all right, so Paul, and then Sonia.
Uh, Dr. President, uh, thank you for, uh, being with us today, great to see you.
Yeah.
Um, and thank you for your presentation. Um, with the, uh, the, uh, two issues we have right now, COVID and the, and the wildfires, and I know that people, certain people have respiratory problems, asthma and so on. Um, a piece of good news I saw the other day was that some of the N ninety-five masks are now available to the public, whereas for a while they've been um, not available, and they may not be the three M model, but, um, historically, I've found that the N ninety-five do, does a better job than the KN ninety-five or even just the face coverings. Is there, and, and knowing that we want people, especially with the smoke and so forth, do you have any, anything to suggest people that if they want, but they have respiratory problems, uh, what type of mask might be best for them to use currently?
Yeah, thank you for that question, um, the, the cloth face coverings that we've been promoting to protect from COVID nineteen really do not protect from the small um, particulate matter, we call PM two point five from wildfire smoke. To have true protection from that, that, uh, a well-fitted N ninety-five works. Um, but if you have facial hair, or if it's not well-fitted, then it might actually give you a false sense of protection. The, the N ninety-five filter is the size that's needed for decreasing, um, the, the inhalation of the wildfire smoke particles. But at the same time, those really well tight-fitted masks can, um, lead to more claustrophobia, can sometimes make it a little bit more, more of a sensation of difficulty breathing. Um, if you are looking to protect yourself from the wildfire smoke and you are out in it, an N ninety-five that is well-fitted can protect you from the PM two point five. Uh, but really, the priority should be staying indoors, recirculating your air, not letting the smoky air into your house as much as possible, or wherever it is that you are. Um, and trying to, trying to just maintain an indoor environment as clean as possible, and decrease your exposure to it.
Yeah, so what, one other thing, if you could just touch on, and, and I, I don't, I think it's valid, but I just want to have your in, your input on that, and that is that the KN ninety-five are the ear-lute model, and they don't pull as tightly and seal as well, where the N ninety-five go back behind the head and they pull a little bit tighter. Um, so I imagine that the better it seals, being the N ninety-five versus the KN ninety-five would do a better job, is that fair?
You know, I really, I, I can't say for sure, uh, because so much of that is going to be kind of user difference. Um, some people may be able to get a KN ninety-five to fit very well, um, we really, I can't say that you are protected without having a an occupational health fit-tested program, fit-tested N ninety-five, um, that I know can be protective. The others, there's such a variability that I can't make a, an overall comment on that.
Thank you.
So Sonia?
The news is encouraging that cases are flattening and that we're doing better and looking at possibly children coming back to school and looking at applying for phase two. I'm just wondering if there's a trade-off, if we go to phase two, will, will we be compromising children going back to school?
Um, I think that's a great question as well, um, I think we've talked before about how any movement we have towards reopening and increased, um, increased, uh, exposure of people to others, um, increased gatherings, any of those increase our risk of new cases. Um, so I think that whether schools reopen first or phase two movement happens first, either of those will risk the chance of the other one, yes. Uh, because we can anticipate some increase in cases from, from both of those actions.
So with that, I think we need to really, um, as a board, maybe have a process of connecting with our community partners to get some advice on what we should do first, maybe, I mean, Gary, maybe we could work with PGA, maybe when the fire wildfires settle down a little bit, um, we have a little bit more capacity, but to do a concerted outreach effort so that we as a board can make the best, most informed decision, connecting with our school partners, our business partners, um, people in our community to advise us on, if there truly is a trade-off, what, what, what should we do? Should we hold out for schools to open and get those going? Or, um, should we move into, to boosting our economy with, with phase two? Input would be really important.
I don't know that anyone can answer that question. I, I.
Well. So I think, um, I think that I do look to you as a board, um, to help us set our, our pri- So I think, I think that I do look to you as a board to help us set our, our priorities. I know that there are a lot of public health risks. I think the, the benefits to the health of the public for having children back in school are huge. I think that having children back in school helps boost our economy and that parents are not challenged with the daycare issues that they're challenged with now. And the importance of getting our economy moving again is also incredibly critical to our, you know, our community's health in many ways. So I'm not going to give you my, my personal opinion on this, but I do, I appreciate that, that getting input from the community on what the priorities are would be appreciated, and I look to you as a board for, for guidance on that.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Dr. President. And I won't excuse Nancy yet because I'm probably too soon. So Gary, it's back to you.
Yeah, so we're still on COVID. Next is a approval of an addendum number five to resolution number twenty twenty dash fourteen, declaring a local state of emergency regarding COVID nineteen. Stephen Madcor County Council, if you would please present.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, on March second of this year, the board declared an emergency concerning COVID nineteen. Since that time, the board has continued extending that emergency declaration four times. It is slated to expire on September twelfth. What you have before you is another extension by way of a fifth addendum. It will extend the declaration of emergency attributed to COVID nineteen with the attendant emergency measures to the date of January eighth, twenty twenty-one. We bumped it out that far, so you wouldn't have to revisit this between now and the end of the year. And the board does not convene around the holidays, so we put a little extra cushion in there. If things were to improve and you wanted to lift the emergency, you would certainly have the authority and ability to do so. But this is addendum number five, extending it to January eighth. Any questions by the board?
I don't see any. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair. To approve.
Second.
It's been moved and second to approve. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stephen, for your extremely interesting presentation.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are finished with our COVID updates. So thank you, Sarah, Philip and Nancy. You may vote. We'll move on to our first regular presentation. This is a reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance, adoption of ZDO dash two seven six, a minor and time-sensitive comprehensive plan and zoning development ordinance amendments. We have Nate Boderman from County Council to present.
Thank you. Good morning, thanks for your time and courtesies today, particularly in light of all that's going on. Today, staff's recommending adoption of an ordinance to implement the previously approved ZDO two seven six proposal, which contains minor and time-sensitive amendments to the county's zoning and development ordinance, as well as the county's comprehensive plan. These amendments make relatively minor changes that are necessary to comply with various new state and federal mandates that also clarify existing language and correct some errors that were in the code and that adopts some optional provisions that really required only minimal staff analysis. We summarized the proposed amendments in the staff report, but I'll just note some of the more notable ones. There's a proposal to increase the notice radius for land use applications to a half mile in many of the rural and resource zoning districts. Additionally, a proposal to repeal the county's restrictions on operating hours for marijuana retailing in the, the county, the effect of which is really to leave the operating hours to those that are already set by the state. And finally, to adopt standards and review procedures for small cell wireless facilities, which is necessary to accommodate the new five G wireless technology that is currently being deployed really around the country everywhere. The Planning Commission held public hearings on June twenty-second and July thirteenth of this year and voted to recommend approval of staff's proposal to the board with the additional recommendation that the minimum setbacks required for kennels in a rural residential zoning district be reduced from two hundred feet to one hundred feet. The Board of Commissioners held a public hearing on August fifth and orally approved the ZDO two seven six proposal as originally recommended by staff, with the majority of the board declining to accept that recommendation of the Plan Commission to reduce the setbacks for the kennels, as I discussed just a moment ago. Staff has drafted the ordinance materials before you today to reflect the board's decision that was made on August fifth. Certainly staff's recommendation that you approve these ordinance materials, which implement that prior approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions? I'm not seeing any. Well, with that, since we're all fairly familiar, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read ZDO dash two seven six by title only.
Second.
Thinking that we probably should read the whole motion because it's a, an emergency. Wait, is this a different one? No, never mind. All right. It's removed and second that we read the ZDO two seven six by title only. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? I saw her say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Chair Bernard.
Hi, a motion carries unanimously. Ask the clerk to read ZDO two seven six by title. So we need you to read that, I guess. I'm a little confused here.
Adoption of previously approved comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance amendments.
Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion.
All right, I move we approve. I move we adopt ZDO two seven six, adoption of previously approved comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance amendments.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Martha. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ZDO two seven six, adoption of a previous approved comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance amendment. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please read the, oh, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Bernard.
Hi, a motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And the next item, Gary, is a public hearing, correct?
Yes, public hearing, a second reading for an ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty, amending appendix C, local contract review board rules of the Clackamas County Code. Commissioner Taylor from County Council to present.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to review this, particularly in light of everything that's happening. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. This is the second reading for an amendment to our code that would add and administrate a check when the county disposes of personal property. If you recall, the general process is when we dispose of personal property, it's in a competitive nature. There is an exception for donations to certain nonprofits and governmental entities. There was a concern that some donations under this exception maybe could have realized greater value to the county had they been sold in a competitive manner. This adds an administrative check where any donations under that exception have to have the county administrators' written approval. We discussed this previously on the thirteenth, and I'm happy to answer any other questions this board might have about this amendment.
Does anyone have any clarifying questions?
I, I don't have a question, I have a comment. And my, my comment is this, like, it's, I've kind of touched on this before, and that is that if it's going, if the exceptions are going to be in front of the county administrator, I would really like to have, make sure our internal auditor is monitoring all those exceptions and to make sure, not necessarily that they're checking on the administrator, but they're actually checking on, on where, where those are going, how they're being used, and to make sure that they are as legitimate as possible. I, I just, I just worry about exceptions being overused and maybe, again, just concerns that we're following processes as much as possible and, and not looking for exceptions.
All right. With that, we will move to a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing, and Christina Terwilliger will moderate this portion. Christina?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I'll be coordinating the public comment for the specific public hearing and later for general comment. If any attendees would like to provide comments specific to this public hearing, you can do so now by utilizing the raise hand feature now on Zoom. Or if you're on the phone and want to give public comment or give comment on this matter, excuse me, please hit star nine. Again, we'll open public comment to any topic related to county business in a little while. But if you have a comment related to this matter, please select raise hand on the Zoom bar. I do not see anybody, and I don't see anybody by phone, so and we have no emails regarding this matter.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we read the ordinance by title only. I'd ask the clerk to please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Aye. Now, let me see. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance amending appendix C, local contract review board rules of the Clackamas County Code.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two zero, amending appendix C, local contract review board rules of the Clackamas County Code and acknowledge the concerns and recommendations of Commissioner Savis for the record.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved that we approve the ordinance number zero seven dash two zero two zero, amending appendix C, local contract review board rules of the Clackamas County Code and consider Commissioner Savis's recommendation to review the distribution of assets.
Forgive me, Chair, I want to clarify. What are you asking for? Are you saying you want the internal auditor to automatically review every request? Do what do you want? This is a language change, so what are you asking for?
Paul? I, I'm not asking for a language change, I'm just suggesting maybe at a future date we consider automatically auditing any and all exceptions under this ordinance. But that's not for today, I just want to get it on the record, that is something I want to pursue in the future.
That's kind of why I said consider.
So we can ask the, I mean, there's an internal audit oversight committee, that's their responsibility to make that decision. We can ask to put on their future committee agenda to, for them to review, we can do that for sure.
Great. All right. I'll ask, did I read that already? Yes, now I'll ask our clerk to please poll the commission.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Hi, a motion carries unanimously. Gary, what's up next?
Uh, next is the consent agenda, and I'll ask Christina to read that.
So the consent agenda for today, item A, health housing and human services, approval of a local subrecip率 grant agreement with Clackamas County's Children's Commission to provide evidence-based parenting education classes, approval of subrecip率 grant amendment number two with Oregon City Together for youth marijuana and substance abuse prevention efforts in Clackamas County, approval of subrecip率 grant amendment number three with Northwest Family Services for student resource coordination, approval of intergovernmental revenue agreement with State of Oregon Department of Human Services, DHS, for the operation of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, employee and training, employment and training, excuse me, approval of chain order number three between Clackamas County and Bannlin Construction LLC for Clackamas County Children's Commission Health Start New Classroom Building Project, approval of lease agreement with Geona Healthcare and Clackamas Health Centers Division for pharmacy space inside the new Sandy Health Clinics, approval to apply to Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs for fiscal year twenty twenty-one distribution of funds under Department and Transportation and Development, approval of intergovernmental agreement with the Department of Environmental Quality for the Two-Day Housing Hazard Waste Collection Event, approval of contract with Colton Homes Incorporated doing business as Colton Construction Co. for the ADA Ramp Improvements on Oak Grove Boulevard under Finance Department, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, work with Financial Plan in United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, Wildlife Services for Predator Management under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, local subrecip率 grant agreement between the District Attorney's Office and the Children's Center of Clackamas County to benefit child abuse victims and their families, approval of intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County behalf of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the State of Oregon, acting by and through the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for fingerprint servicing under Community Corrections, approval of grant award between Oregon Criminal Justice Commission and Clackamas County to provide treatment options for high utilizers of mental health and criminal justice resources, approval of grant award between Oregon Criminal Justice Commission and Clackamas County to assist in preventing, preparing for and responding to the coronavirus. Under the Juvenile Department, approval of intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Education Services District to provide education and vocational opportunities for at-risk youth and underwater environmental services, one-year extension of the intergovernmental agreement between Water Environment Services and the Clackamas River Water Providers for Clackamas River Watershed Activities. That's the conclusion.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Ask the clerk to please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. The next item is dog barking. Oh, no, that's not it. Our next item is public communication, and I would ask Christina Terwilliger to please moderate this portion.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Now's the time for general comment relating to any county business. If you have a comment related to the county business, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're calling by the phone, you can hit star nine now. I will give people a few seconds to do that. We also have one email that came into the BCC@clackamas.us email account that I'll read at the end of the public comment.
That looks like everybody online here are staff, so I don't expect any public comment.
I see no hands raised, so I'll go ahead and read the email. It's from Valerie Lee. Says, I can't make the Zoom meeting next week live due to work, but I would like to follow, I'd like the following questions addressed. When is Clackamas County going to fight to be separated from Multnomah County? I don't understand how our county is allowed to be tied to them indefinitely when the numbers don't support it. Marion County is in, or has been in phase two much longer and their numbers are consistently higher than ours. Why can gyms and restaurants be open but kids can't participate in school sports following safety guidelines? Why can gyms and restaurants be open but kids can't participate in school sports following safety guidelines? Why can adults play pickleball on courts without masks but kids can't practice sports in small groups with their teammates outdoors with masks? According to Oregon City High School, they won't allow practices for sports until Phase Two. Our kids are at a huge disadvantage over kids and the other parts of the county and even other parts of the state. Kids are the ones at the least risk from the virus and they are the ones missing out on the most with the current restrictions. I would like our elected officials to fight for our kids in Clackamas County to be able to resume modified normal activities by moving our county to Phase Two. Kids should not be isolated and forced to spend hours on screens." And that's it.
All right, thank you for the email, Ken, you have your hand up.
I just had one question, many of those questions should be directed to the Oregon Health Authorities and the Governor's Office, and I was wondering if that information had, those questions had been forwarded to those agencies.
They haven't been yet, but I can definitely do that after the meeting.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure they've never received any of those questions, so they'll be enlightened. Paul?
Yeah, the only comment I'll make is that I have still at this point in time not received response from my letter to the governor. So I wouldn't want to have the expectation of people that they will get a response per se from the governor, but maybe the OHA. But I would certainly like to know how many people are responded to, what the follow-up is, regardless what area they reach out to, whether it's the county, or whether it's OHA, or our Health Department, or the EOC. But I wouldn't want to send anyone, or encourage anyone to send a letter and expect a response necessarily if I haven't even received the response.
All right. Thank you, and seeing nothing, we'll close the public portion of this here meeting and move on to our County Administrator Gary Schmidt's update.
Yes, thank you Chair. First, during your board recess between August 24th and September 3rd, in accordance with the Clackamas County Code Appendix C dash 104, I signed two contracts on your behalf because you were on recess and did not have regular business meetings. I previously emailed this to you, but I will state it today for the record and seeking your ratification. First, for the Finance Department, the CARES Act reimbursement request to the State of Oregon in the amount of $451,633. That was our most recent reimbursement request as of August 7th, 2020. I signed that on your behalf on August 21st, 2020, and it was submitted to the state. To date, the county has received a reimbursement of a total of $7.3 million for COVID Act, or COVID funding. We have not yet received that $451,000 latest reimbursement. Second was for the Department of Transportation and Development. It was an agreement between the county and the Western Federal Lands Highway Division for the Lolo Pass Road Stabilization and Surface Preservation Project. The board previously approved this agreement in August 2019. The agreement I signed was simply an amendment to extend the timeline for that agreement. There was no change in the funding, the funding does not involve any general funds. So commissioners, I signed that agreement on August 27th, 2020. I am seeking your ratification of both those agreements I signed on your behalf per the county code.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify the signatures of Director Schmidt on those contracts.
We moved in second that we ratify those items that our administrator just spoke about. Any further discussion? Have we thought about turning it over to, for collection? The money we haven't got from the state yet?
Oh, I haven't considered that Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, Christina, would you please poll us? I guess we really, we don't really have to, but yeah, there's a motion, please poll us.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
You bet. All right, Gary, you have more updates?
I do, yes, want to share some good things, there are some good things happening right now in Clackamas County, and I want to share that. Yesterday volunteers put together 100 food boxes for a housing facility that had some major power outages along Highway 26 in Clackamas County. And I want to thank our volunteers who did that in literally a matter of hours to make sure that those individuals had food and can survive during this very traumatic time for all of us. So thank you to our volunteers and county staff who helped do that. With all the fires that are going on, of course, our Emergency Operations Center team along with Technology Services and our GIS mapping team created a website that maps the evacuation areas, and our staff did that literally in a moment's notice and are updating it as regularly as possible. This is a critical resource for our community and will help our county residents identify where they're located and if they're in the zone of an evacuation zone. One day alone this week, that site received 2 million visits, our county website with that map. So thank you for our staff for putting that together quickly. It's not perfect, we're doing our very best as quickly as we can. The public can view this on our Clackamas website, clackamas.us/wildfires. Next, I want to recognize some county staff for their fantastic work. Jason Warner, a structural and mechanical inspector in our Department of Transportation and Development, Building Codes Division, was named Inspector of the Year by the Oregon Building Officials Association at their annual meeting last month. Jason works in our very busy urban area where there is a high percentage of commercial and industrial projects and buildings, as well as a mix of multifamily and single-family residences. He is conscientious about his inspections, he's built a trusting and respected reputation among contractors and the public as being fair and knowledgeable, and the state association named him Inspector of the Year, so congratulations to Jason. Also Matt Rozell, who's our Building Codes Administrator, was also recognized by the Oregon Building Officials Association as the sole recipient of this year's Presidential Award. This is what the association had to say about Matt. Over the years, Matt has served in almost every volunteer position within our association, including as a committee member, chair, board liaison, nominating an awards chair, and is a very popular instructor, teaching numerous classes and institute seminars and moderating meetings for our members. He is a countless advocate and supporter for our association. So thank you Matt for your fantastic work and your recognition. Finally, of course, commissioners, I just want to thank all of our staff here at Clackamas County. They have been working for the last six months under the COVID emergency declaration and in the last four days under the wildfire declaration. Obviously, our first responder staff in the sheriff's office, our C-Com Center, Community Corrections, our Emergency Operations Center, our Public Health Division, our Public and Government Affairs staff. I mean, I don't want to miss anyone because everyone has gone beyond the call of duty to serve the public of Clackamas County. And you know, most of our employees actually live in Clackamas County and many of them have also been displaced because they've had to evacuate their homes, or in some cases, our employees have lost their homes. Yet they have not stopped their tireless dedication to serving the public first and foremost. So I give my heartfelt thanks to all of our county employees who are doing their very best every day to serve and support our community. Thank you so much. That is my update, Chair.
Thank you Gary. Paul, you're up first.
Yeah, I can't help but just really speak to the hardship that this fire, let alone the COVID thing, has put on families and our neighbors and our community. My heart goes out to all those that are, who've lost property or are sitting at a site somewhere wondering if their home is still there or standing up. And I'm just hoping that this is not going to be as bad as we all fear. And I'm just grateful to hear that we've got new resources coming in to Clackamas County to help fight this fire. I do know that the south part of the county's been the hardest hit and they're seeing a certain level of devastation and fallout of ash and all those circumstances. And been through that earlier in my life, so I know what that's like. Fortunately, I didn't lose any property. I also want to say a great huge thank you for all the people that have chipped in to help people move, to help make their sites available for parking and for evacuees and food and all those things. So this is a great example of community coming together to help others in need, and I'm hoping that if we can continue that via any assistance, please reach out. I don't know if we've got a hotline for that, I've gotten a lot of calls, I've been trying to direct people to the best resource possible. But if we've got, when it comes to either food or other resources, if there's any kind of a hotline, we've got set up for just assistance, needed assistance. And I know that our EOC's overwhelmed with phone calls, I don't want to misdirect anything, so if Gary has any insight, great, but you know, let's just pray and hope that that there's no more loss of life or no more loss of structures and we get this under control soon. Thank you.
I, my answer to that Commissioner, yes, we have on our county website several phone numbers. I'll mention them right now, the first is the Clackamas County Call Center, which is Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's a 503-655-8224, again, 503-655-8224. That's based through our Emergency Operations Center, but they can answer any question anyone has on anything related to wildfires or COVID for that matter. Public can also dial 211, which is a regional information hotline. And as well, we have our crisis and support line for anyone who feels in crisis during this time. That number's 503-655-8585. Again, these numbers are on our Clackamas County website, thank you.
Thank you Gary.
Thank you, and Martha?
Well, we had a recess, and I don't think any of us realized that our first week officially back, that we would be facing what we're facing now. This is unprecedented, in all the years I've been on the commission, I've never seen anything like this happen before. And I can sometimes say, you know, have a little bit of black humor and say, well, when are the locusts going to hit too? But it is feeling, I can't imagine how weary and tired our staff is. Because I'm weary and tired, but yet I really believe it's those folks that have held everything together. You know, we're policymakers, we play our part. But it's really the on-the-ground people, in my opinion, that hold this county together. And so thanks Gary and thanks Paul, and I know my other commissioners, my other colleagues are going to echo this, that we are really only as effective as the people we work with. And I honestly think, right now, this has reminded me even more so how valuable our policy coordinators are, our administrators, our department heads. Nancy Bush deserves an Olympic gold medal for her work. I mean, I don't know how that woman gets any rest at this point, and the staff. And now the fact that we're dealing with the federal government helping out and the fire marshal, the state fire marshal, and getting actually external firefighters in that will clear up, enable our local firefighters to also attend to the local community's needs is unprecedented. We've never had anything like this happen before. So I just want to end by saying I hope everyone stays safe and well. Gary, you've given phone numbers, you can look on the clackamas.us website and there is a portion of talking about wildfires 2020. It includes evacuation maps and wildfire updates. It also includes evacuation levels. And the reason I mentioned them is because I got a call from a friend who lives in the urban area and she goes, "Oh, my stars, we're at Level One." You know, and I said, "Well, we all are at Level One." And there's parts of the county that are Level Two and Level Three. And so if you really want to know what those levels are, what they mean, and what what the strong suggestions are in order to get ready, should you evacuate, I would really suggest that people take the time, look at this. I myself have packed, I'm not in an area that is eminently, I'm in a Level One area, thank goodness, but you know, I've got a bag packed, I've got my water set aside, I've got dog food in the car, and should it become necessary to leave, you know, make sure you have a route out, make sure you have an idea of where you can go, and all that information, as I said, is on our website. So stay safe out there everyone, and let's hope that this is, this fire is contained soon and the pandemic. Keeping our fingers crossed seems to be, our metrics seem to be indicating that we're, we seem to be going on a downswing with that. So that's all I have for today, thanks.
Thank you Martha, Sonia?
Thank you Chair Bernard. I appreciate the comments of my colleagues and echo them. The, one of the big takeaways over the last couple of days is, and I'm sure we've all felt this, is the incredible inspiration and gratitude for how the community has come together to support each other from everything, from evacuating animals to making sure people have places to go, to making sure that there's water, to making sure that people are cared for, that people who are older and isolated are reached out to, neighbors connecting with neighbors, people, our first responders, our sheriff's deputies going door to door and making sure and doing sweeps to make sure that people evacuate dangerous areas. This is incredible. Speaks to the resilience that we have as a community and it's the type of resilience that will lead us through this recovery. And we're pretty fortunate and pretty special elected officials to, and employees to be part of such an incredible community. So let's not lose sight of the glimmers of light that shine through the smoke because that's what we're going to need to keep focusing on as we move through this.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I think my colleagues have spoken most eloquently on the work of the public employees and the volunteers and the business community that has stepped up to help throughout the county, so I won't repeat it, but I echo your comments and sentiments very, very much. And as a board, I think we are incredibly lucky to have the talents working for us that we do. Starting with Gary Schmidt and all the way down to the guy shoveling dirt at the side of the road, working on our roads and everything in between. We have wonderful people and they have really turned to. The tourism board meetings and fair board meetings were canceled for obvious reasons. The fair board folks have been out there volunteering at the fairgrounds, taking care of animals that people have brought in there, helping people that are camped there. And the current chair, who is also a firefighter, Ted Kuntz, is out actually in Sandy as the safety officer on a portion of the big fires that are in that part of our county right now as we speak. I want to leave my comments with the following positive note. Bob Oblak is a resident of Clackamas County and he has an aunt who happens to live in Seattle. Her name is Hannah Schenk. Hannah Schenk's family donated the land for the park called Fayre Park many years ago. She is today, or actually on the 12th, excuse me, I got my handwriting, I see the 10th or the 12th, celebrating her 100th birthday. So I've sent her a card saying thank you to her and her family for the donation to the park, congratulating her on her 100th birthday. And if anyone else or the board would care to send a card to her to thank her and congratulate her, I have the address available. Just contact me and I will see to it that you get it. And I will close my remarks there, thank you.
You, I came in yesterday, I think it was, and happened to run into Steve and Madcor, and I got to say, it was nice to see a human being outside of my house and to have a conversation. Um, you know, we still have folks who are gathering in mass gatherings, uh, concerts. Uh, those are pretty scary, uh, and that did occur in Clackamas County. We talked a little bit about, um, you know, yeah, we could charge a fee to do this, but, uh, who's going to enforce, uh, en- enforce it? The governor already has restriction on mass gatherings over, uh, 25? Is it 25? Something like that. 50, 250, whatever, and nobody's enforcing it. But, uh, it's something we need to consider, something we brought forward many times as a commission. Uh, and, uh, something to be considered. Um, I, yesterday, I do not live in an area that's in danger, by the way. I get emails all the way from Australia. Are you okay? Are you okay? Uh, but yesterday was a pretty scary day to wake up to with the wind and the, the, the ash and the smoke. I was really personally scared. I went out, turned my sprinklers on. Uh, but, uh, you know, the house burned down. It's just an object. Save your life first. And then yesterday I said to Gary, you know, this is what I have spent my entire career getting ready for. And a lot of people have, so we're as ready as we're going to be, and we're going to make, uh, do everything we can to, uh, protect you and your property and your family. But the number one priority is lives. So please listen and leave when told. Uh, be ready, uh, when, uh, you're told to be ready. And, uh, please be careful. Um, with that, uh, this, uh, life-learning effort has really, uh, helped. I know it has helped Gary. I mean, his communication skills have, have really made a big difference in this county. And Nancy Bush, I talked to the National Guard guy last night, says that Nancy is fantastic. She's very experienced, and Clackamas County is lucky to have her, and I think so too. And that's true of many of the people who are working during this time period. I just can't name them all. But Nancy and Gary, I know very well. So thank you, Gary. Thank you, Nancy. And thank you all, the staff, for your dedication and your hard work. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.